I'm going to call to order meeting of the Abington Public School Committee Tuesday for summer test. We'll stop by school in class.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any visitors that would like to speak? We'll move right into the reading and approval of our minutes. November 4th, four minutes from regular reading. No changes? Are you looking for a motion on that?
Yeah, motion.
Alan, second with Kathy. Alan, David. Same for our October 22nd, 2013, minutes. Erica, Laniwa.
I'll make a motion.
Mike, second. Alan, Alan David.
Hi.
I'll move right into our presentation, our MCAS 2013 results for grades three through 10.
Sherry's.
Okay.
I don't think she can just say to start.
Do you want to move to a couple announcements while we wait?
So, under my section, Department Superintendent Schools Personnel Administration, informational, I've accepted the resignation of Paulette Batson as the school accountant for the purpose of retirement effective August 15th, 2014. I've accepted the resignation of Anne Beaton as an English teacher within the Abbotton Public Schools for the purpose of retirement effective August 24th, 2015. Accepted the resignation of Catherine Gamache as a special needs teacher within the Abbotton Public Schools for the purpose of retirement effective June 30th, 2014. Accepted the resignation of Joanne Martin as an elementary teacher within the Abbotton Public Schools for the purpose of retirement effective at the end of the 2013-14 school year. And approved the appointment of Elizabeth Clautier as a paraprofessional within the Abbotton Public Schools effective November 18th, 2013. Approved the appointment of Sarah McSherry as a tutor within the Abbotton Public Schools effective Monday, December 2nd, 2013. And granted Andrea Doyen, a reading teacher, a leave of absence in accordance with options B and A as stipulated of Article 24 of the Unit Day Agreement. Sherry's here.
We'll start with our run test presentations.
Just to give a quick introduction, I am Sherry Ponor, the new elementary director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And so I will be presenting the data for the elementary schools. And Liz, Diane, and Meg will be presenting for middle school and high school. So feel free to ask any questions and we'll get started. So this is the MCAS data for the, for last school year, 2013, this spring. And just to give a quick overview of what is actually tested on the MCAS test. For ELA, there's a test grades three through nine. Liz, they take it in grade 10.
Three through 10, not nine.
So there's a gap there in grade nine. So we have three through eight, they skip a year, and then take it again in grade 10. For math, it's the same thing. And for science and technology, students are not tested consecutively year after year. So it's grades five, eight. And then it is grade nine, but it's not reported until grade 10. So that's what you're going to see tonight. I don't know if you can make out the red Xs in ELA under grades four, seven, and 10? That's where the long composition is tested for those specific grades. And the green X under science and technology.
That is subject specific, which is the biology.
Yes. So just to give you a quick overview of what we're going to talk about tonight. The first set of data we're going to look at is the historical performance over five years for each specific grade. We're going to be looking at the performance by item type, so specifically what is tested in each subject area. We're going to look at cohort performance, growth. We're going to look at data conclusions and show you what our recommendations are moving forward. So to start, we're going to start with science. Science for historical performance. Now, I just wanted to point out a couple things to start. You see both the line and the bar graph. The line graph is representative of the state data. So that's the average. And you can see 2009, 10, all the way up to 13. The bar graph represents, give me the microphone. Okay.
The bar graph represents the Abington data. The W is warning, NI at the bottom is needs improvement, proficient, and then advanced. So in all the graphs going forward, what we want to see are the green bar graphs lower for the Ws and the NIs, and higher in the proficient and advanced. So what we see for grade five science versus the district and versus the state MCAS results is we see that the proficient data fluctuates yearly. We have seen a bit of a decline in the advanced science scores and an increase in the needs improvement scores.
And for the grade eight data, as you can see, except for the 2011 scores, our warning failing scores have been below, which means they're better than the state. Our scores for needs improvement, as you can see, as what Sherry had said, our scores for needs improvement are below state average. Proficient, below state average. And advanced consistently below or at state average. For the grade eight data, historically, the state averages are low, and especially when you look at the advanced scores, our scores are low and as well as the state. Oops, I'm sorry.
Specifically attributed to why we have so many needs improvements? Why our need improvements are higher than.
Yes, and actually, we, we're going to address that toward the end of the presentation, if you don't mind. Waiting until then, we have some thoughts on that and some recommendations that'll address that.
Okay. Great, thanks. For our grade 10 data, as you can see, our scores for warning failing throughout the years have been lower, which is good, better than the state. Our needs improvement, as you can see, are lower than the state, except for 2013, these past scores, which is good. Our proficient is well above the state, which is better, which is good. And our advanced, when you look at it over the years where we were doing a little better and now we're a little bit not so good over the last few years for our advanced scores. But still, not that far off from the state.
The second piece of data we are looking at under science is by item type. So if you take a look at the far left, the dark purple line, you see the word "all" underneath. That's just a composite score of all the data for 2013, for grade five. MC is multiple choice, so I broke it out even further, multiple choice versus, if you look, open responses right next to it in the dark purple bar. We do tend to perform a little bit better in, on multiple choice than we do in open response. The four lighter bars on the right-hand side are equivalent to the different item types. So ESS is Earth, Space, and Science. The second one is Life Science. Third is Physical Science, which includes the chemistry and the physics portion, and then the technology piece. So overall, out of all those four categories, we perform best in the physical science.
The grade eight data shows the same, the same all, multiple choice, open response, and the four areas of the sciences, because the grade five and the grade eight MCAS tests is, it's an integrated course where they are taught all four of those disciplines. So they're tested out on all four of those disciplines in grade five and in grade eight. So when we're looking at the grade eight data, you can see that our students outscored the state in the open response, okay? And the life science component and the technology component, okay, for this past year. Because the 10th grade test is a subject-specific test, and as Sherry had said, our students take the biology test. There are four, four different tests, but as I said, we give the biology test freshman years. So the standards are obviously geared towards biological applications. So we have all, we have multiple choice, open response, and the question types are anatomy and physiology, cell biology, biochemistry, ecology, evolution, and genetics. And this past year's data shows that we scored above the state for all the questions, the multiple choice, and the open response. And when we break that down by standard type, we were above our state average for all question types, except for on this exam, the biochemistry was about 2% less than the state.
Okay, moving forward with math. Math historical performance data. This data shows information pulled from 2009 up through last year, the most current data. This is for grade three. We see a modest increase in proficient for 2013 this past year. We're consistently lower than the state average in the advanced category, a little bit higher in the needs improvement than we are relative to the state. In grade four, between the years 2010 and 2012, we were on par with the state average. And for 2013, unfortunately, the needs improvement increased and the proficient has decreased for math, grade four. Grade five math, we performed better than the state in both advanced and proficient combined for all the years except for 2010. And at that, we're only under by approximately 1%. But you can also see, if you take a look at the state data, it has a similar pattern to it. Abington pattern follows it very similarly as well. Grade six, between the years 2009 and 2013, we scored above the state average in both proficient and advanced with the combined scores. So we are, we do see the improvement going into five and six.
Hi, how are you? I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the middle school and high school piece to it. There is our five-year data in front of you, and you'll notice that a lot of the bars mirror the relationship between the lines. In 2013 specifically, we had 6% below the state in advanced and proficient. We did increase our students from last year, our students in advanced by 2%. We had 1% less students in warning than the state. And although we have 3% fewer students in need improvement since last year, we still have 8% more than the state in needs improvement. We really need to work on moving those students towards the proficiency category. In grade eight, we were 5% below the state when we combined advanced and proficient for this past year. And although we have 1% more, 1% more students in proficient than the state, we have 6% fewer in advanced. We are even with the state, or above the state, I'm sorry, even or below the state in terms of the warning category. In grade 10, you'll notice a different kind of chart than you've seen in the past. One of the reasons, they say, is because this is the test that counts for graduation. So students put a little bit more effort into it. In 2013, we had 78% in the advanced proficient categories compared to the state's 80%. And although we have 8% more students in the advanced than in the state, we have 10% fewer in the advanced category than the state. I just said, okay, sorry. We increased the percentage of students in advanced from 34% from last year to 45% this year, allowing us to receive extra credit on the school report card.
If we take a look at math performance by item type and by grade, just to point out, there's grades three, four, five, and six at the bottom. And by item type on the left-hand side of each of the charts, you'll see again "all", so that combines all the score, multiple choice, open response. Essay is short answer. We have geometry, measurement in data, numbers based 10, numbers with fractions, and algebra. If you take a look at grades three and four, they fell slightly below the state average, but with our grades five and six, they, they fell at or above the state average in most categories.
In grade seven, I decided to do one year to make it a little bit easier to read. Our strength was in patterns and relations and algebra with 76%. Oh, yes, thank you. I have a note here, too. There's an additional sheet that you have in front of you in place of the chart that is in the packet. I looked at the wrong year data when I did it, so I apologize. So the black and white version refers to the 2013 data. Thank you. I appreciate that. Our strength in 2013 was in patterns, relations, and algebra. We had 76% of the questions being answered correctly, which is 2% above the state. And geometry was also a strength for us, with 75% of the questions being answered correctly with 1% above the state. I do feel that that's a reflection of the curriculum with the Common Core and the new mass frameworks that we're pushing algebra and algebraic thinking back to the younger levels. And I think this is the first time we get a chance to see that here. The weaknesses, it has been consistent over years in terms of measurement, earning 57%. Even more concerning than that is that it's 7% below the state. And we're even with the state in multiple choice, but slightly below on open response and short answer. In grade eight, number cents remains a strength. We're even with the state at 61%. A weakness has become data statistics and probability, with 49%, which is an 8% below the state. I think that's also a reflection of the Common Core. As a result, that some of the data statistics and probability standards that have traditionally been taught in the high school, high school, have been moved to grade eight. And kind of that transition piece. Once again, the highest percentage of points were earned in patterns, relations, and algebra, yet we were still below the state by 2%. And in terms of grade 10, the strength was number cents, which were below the state by 1%. The weakness was data statistics and probability, as well as measurement, both of them at 6% below the state. And our highest amount of points were earned in measurement, which is a little bit different for us. It's usually something we struggle a little bit with, so there are some gains. The biggest concern is that, as you can see, we are at or below the state in every category, which makes it obvious that we have some work to do. I'd just like you to look at this bar graph for a second, because you hear us talking about the Common Core, yet we're reporting our data based on previous standards from 2001. And the reason is because, in order to be able to do our five-year historical data, we have to be able to compare apples to apples. What's happening now is the categories have changed. So they give you two different ways to report out data. So this is the same exact data from the previous slide, and they're both on the same page on the handout that I gave you, reported according to the new Massachusetts 2011 frameworks. And it's just something that's interesting when you see that we've been reporting with five categories over the past, since MCAS has started, and now we have all these different categories that the questions have been broken up into. So it's very interesting, and something else you need to look at is you see the biggest dip in the very first, which is considered, they call it arithmetic for short. It's arithmetic with polynomials and rational expressions is the full title. We couldn't fit it all on there. And you can see that there's a pretty big gap there. But when you look closer at the data, that represents one question. So it's really about looking at this through an eye that understands where we need to really concentrate on, instead of looking at basically the whole picture.
And the third piece of looking at the math is looking at the cohort data. Cohort, the definition for the cohort would be looking at a group of students, the same group of students each year. What this does not include in this data are the transient students that move in and out of the district. So when looking at the cohort data, and as you see up through grade 10, it is the same group of students. You always have that smaller population moving in and out, but it's looking at these students over the course of time. So obviously, we only have one data point for our grade three, which is similar to the results that you saw earlier. We scored 10% above the state in advanced and proficient combined. And just to give you a perspective, this class is graduating in 2022. Grade four, so this is grade four last spring. These are the students that are now in grade five. Okay, so this is grade four from last year. And on the left, on the left-hand side here, this set of data, that's, that would be their grade three scores. Okay, on the right would be their grade four scores. So great, yes.
This slide is apples to apples. Is this a group of kids?
Same kids, yes. So grade four scored below the state in advanced and proficient. This group of cohort kids scored below average in proficient and advanced both years. Grade five, so in the year 2011, these kids were in grade three. 2012, they're, this is their grade four, and then their grade five last year. So grade five showed improvement from third grade through fifth grade in advanced and proficient. So they actually went from a negative 21 in the proficient and advanced, so they scored 21% below advanced and proficient in 2011 in grade three. When they were in grade four, they scored 3% below the state average. And then last year, they actually scored above the state average by 4%. Grade six cohort, they improved the last two years. So when they were in grades four, I'm sorry, in grades five and six, they improved by 5% each year compared to the state. So the 2010 data would have been their grade three.
The grade seven data is one of my favorite pieces of data to look at. When you take a look at it specifically in the year 2012, which is the second from the right, that's really what we would like to see, with our advanced bar being higher than the state, our needs improvement being below the state, and our warning being below the state. And I think you can really see the gains that these students have made when you look at the bars going from left to right, just even looking at the warning at, you know, in 2009, they were pretty even with the state in terms of warning. And then we had more students in warning category. And then the next year, you can see that gains started being made, where we were, had less students in warning. That was really obvious in 2012. And in 2013, we remained below the state in terms of our warning category. But that 2012 piece of data is really what we would love to see a lot of these bars look As you look here, one of the concerns is, when you're looking at the data, is to make sure that you're somehow mirroring the state. You don't want your lines and bars to be completely different. So as you can see, in 2009, needs improvement was a large category for us, as well as the state. But our goal is to really move more students to advanced and proficient. So we want to see those gaps between the bars in advanced category and the line graph to be smaller and smaller, hopefully making progress as we go. And as you can see, they level out more in 2013. In grade 10, it's really hard to compare. These are all still the same students, but you'll notice that the graph on the right, the one that counts for graduation, has a completely different look than the others. Still, if you look, there's quite a gap in the advanced category for us below the state, but we made that gap up in the proficiency category, so they almost even out. I believe total were 2% below the state when you add those two categories together. And if we could, in 2011, I just want to take the top of that bar in needs improvement and stick it over in proficient. And that's really what the goal is. I mean, to be able to move those students from needs improvement to proficient, so that we can make that, that reach with the state.
Okay, last subject area, ELA, which is basically English, our historical performance district versus state. Again, this is going back to historical data. This is not cohort data. We'll be getting to that in a few minutes. So historically, looking back, we see fluctuation in proficient every other year. So you can see in 2010, in 2012, we're at or above the state average, but the other years were, were below. And we're below average consistently with the advanced. For grade four, similar results. We have the fluctuation again, and we have the fluctuation where in 2009 and in 2011, we're at or above the state standards, and our advanced scores are a little bit lower than what we would like them to be. Grade five, we are, here we see a change. We're consistently at or above the state average in proficient. And we scored above the state average in advance in two years, 2009 and then in 2012. For grade six, again, we are consistently at or above the state average in the advanced and proficient categories combined.
Taking a look at the grade seven data, you can see that the, the Abington students, in a sense, mirror the same trends as, as the state, but we seem to outscore the state in proficient every year, but below the state in advanced. You can also see in nine, 10, 11, and 12, we have fewer students in the warning category than the state. However, in the 2013 year, we've matched the state in terms of warning, and we'd like to see that number be smaller. But if you could just take the top of proficient off and put it in advanced, you can see that our numbers are the same in terms of in advanced and proficient at grade seven. The same sort of shape you see in grade eight. If you look at 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13, we have far few students in the warning category in grade eight than the state. We exceed or meet the state in proficient. And in grade eight, which is a reading comprehension test, which does not have the long composition in it, you can see that our advanced is comparable, and that's what we'd really like to see, to have at the same or better in terms of advanced, while keeping the failure rate lower than the state. So grade 10, again, this is the year when it counts. And if you look at grade, if you look at 2013 to the far right, you can see if we were to take that group of students off the top and put them on advanced, not only would be the same, we would exceed the state. We have 94% advanced and proficient, while they have 93. So their advanced and proficient numbers are similar. We have more students in that proficient category, and for the first time, we have no students at all in the failure category. So all our students passed, and only 7% are in the needs improvement category. We also received credit this year for moving students out of, out of proficient into advanced and out of failure into needs improvement.
Second set of data for ELA. This is looking, again, by item type. So on the far left, we have grade three, four, and then five, and then six on the right. Grades three and four performed at or below the state level. Five and six performed at or above the state level. And one of the additional categories found in grade four, that if you remember the second slide with the Xs on it, the fourth graders take the long composition test as well. And for that, we see that they were a little bit below the state average for long composition, which is the writing piece right here.
When we look at grades seven, eight, and 10,
When we look at grades seven, eight, and 10 by item type, I'd like to call your attention to the third bar, the middle bar, if you will, where it says OR, and that's open response. We have scored lower than the state in open response at grade seven and at grade 10. And those are the questions in which students are exposed to a reading, multiple choice questions. And then they have to write something brief where they have to refer back to the text for evidence. So rather than being a score of writing, it's really a writing score that measures reading comprehension. And that open response has been our concern since we've started MCAS, to get students to specifically refer to the text and develop their answers. When we are concerned about student writing, if you look at the bar on the far right-hand side of the seventh grade graph and the 10th grade graph, when it comes to the five paragraph long composition, our students meet or exceed the state. We do have some deficits in grade 10. You can see that we are below the state in most item types except for writing, but it's only by 1 to 3%. But we do make it up in terms of the overall advanced and proficient scores.
And the last piece of data for the ELA is the cohort data. So again, this is the group of students that we follow year after year, the same students. For grade three this past year, they performed at or above the state level in proficient and advanced. In grade four, they performed better as third graders than they did last year as fourth graders in both the proficient and advanced category. In grade five, we see an improvement since they've taken the test in grade three in 2011, where each year they've improved for a total of 11% in the advanced and proficient categories. And then in grade six, again, they scored above the state level in advanced and proficient combined in all four years. And they have progressively improved by 6% between the 2010 and, and 2013 in advanced and proficient.
When we take a look at the grade seven cohort, looking from left to right, you can see that the number of students who report failing scores has decreased. And from grade four to grade seven, we've exceeded the state each of those years in the category of proficient. Grade four was a strong year for them in terms of matching the state for advanced. But you can also see that the number of students scoring in the advanced level has decreased each year. However, when you add the advanced and proficient scores together, our advanced and proficient rate remains comparable to the state in each of those years. So the grade eight cohort does something very similar in terms of proficient and actually does much better in terms of advanced. In 2010, 11, 12, and 13, we've exceeded the state in terms of proficient scores and we're very near to matching the number of students who are advanced. And again, if you look over to the far left of the four bars, our number of students in the warning or failing category has decreased each year. So we continue to build students who are advanced and proficient in grade eight with that cohort. So as this cohort is currently in grade 10 has moved across in, not so much in grade three, but when you look at four, when you look at grade four, five, six, and let's, I have to step back and take a look. This, we're only going four years data, so 10, 8, 7, 6, 5. So you're seeing the scores from grade five to, to grade 10, that these students have again outscored the state largely in terms of the proficient category. And they match the state in terms of advanced until we get to high school and then there's that huge drop. Advanced and proficient together exceed the state, but we don't have that advanced population in our grade 10 class. And we do not have the failing, our students do not fail at grade 10, so they're all eligible for graduation.
And just to point out too, you probably noticed we don't have the cohort data for the science. And that is because of the gaps between the years, but also because at the elementary level and middle school level, it's more of an integrated science. And then at the high school, it's subject specific. So it's very difficult to follow the cohort with similar scores, unlike the math where it's pretty standard item types and also with the ELA. And the last piece we're going to discuss is growth. This has become a big piece for us, actually in all the districts at this point, measuring growth in student performance on the MCAS data. It's what we call the growth model. It factors into our scores, the district. And just to differentiate between the two, although they're interconnected and related, MCAS basically shows how a student's achieving, how they're going to achieve on the, on the test relative to what the standards are. Growth is going to measure how an individual does over a period of time to see how those students grow. So growth is distinct from achievement, but growth also compares students to a similar cohort. So it's a statewide cohort with similar academic peers. So you're not going to have a comparison between your extremely high performing students and your extremely low performing students. They group them with their academic peers to see how they're growing relative to each other. Okay, for the historical data. Again, it's by subject, by grade, and it's year specific. So we have the student growth percentile and achievement. That's what's going to give us the performance for how these students are doing.
Can you just repeat that again about the comparison, like students? Can you, I'm not sure, can you say, can you just repeat that?
Yeah, sure. So basically what the state's going to do, it's not going to put all the students in grade four, lump them together to look at their growth scores. They're going to take a look at those students that grew maybe 10% the year before. And they're going to put them into a general category versus students that might have grown 70%. So they want it, they want to try and even the playing field where you have similar students that perform similarly grouped together versus comparing the extremes or comparing somebody in the middle to the extremes.
So the grade four scores, are those reflective of all grade four students in the Abington public schools? Or is it just a section of grade four students?
It would be a section compared to other similar sections in different districts, grade four.
When you're talking about the growth.
When we're talking about the growth.
We saw earlier, we're all students.
Yes. And I have to apologize for this graph just because it's very difficult to pull it off of the state website. They, they, you can't put it into a PDF, a PowerPoint, and Excel. So I did a snapshot of what the growth scores are. And if you take a look, we've got the median student growth percentile on the bottom axes here. Okay, so it goes from zero to 100. And then on the left over here is our achievement, which is our scores on the MCAS percent proficient or higher. So we have basically four quadrants. We have on the bottom left, this would be our low growth, low achievement. Over here would be high growth, low achievement. Upper left quartile would be low growth, high achievement. And then over here would be high growth, high achievement. The X in the middle is the state average. The biggest bubble right in the middle is the district overall. So that includes everybody, and this is specifically for math. And I'll show you ELA in a minute. Each of these smaller bubbles represents each of the grade levels. So just to give you an idea, for math, we've got grade four here, which is this bubble, and grade seven and eight. So they performed in terms of growth, their student growth percentile performed below the state average and slightly below what the district is showing. For grades five, six, and 10, so these three bubbles here, we performed higher than the state average and the district average. So for example, right here we see grade five. Grade five is in the quadrant of higher growth and higher percent in proficient and advanced. Over here, I'm having a hard time reading it from the back. I believe that's grade 10. So we have about average growth relative to the state and the district, but higher achievement. So the scores on the MCAS were higher, but the growth was a little bit lower or about average with the state. If we take a look at ELA, it's the same thing. We've got our student growth along the bottom, the percentage, and then the percent, percentage for proficient or advanced. We have the X in the middle, which is our state average. The large bubble is the district average. And if you take a look, something that I found interesting is if you take a look here, this is our grade 10 ELA score. And if you recall what Liz was saying about how we performed in the proficient and advanced category, they scored very high this year, the 94%. So when you start getting toward the top, there's not a lot of room to grow. So you can continue to grow, but as you reach that 100%, there's less of that room to grow toward that. So we're, our scores are improving. And that's why it's not, you know, it's not necessarily such a bad thing that the growth isn't as high as you see the percent proficient and advanced. Did you guys want to add anything to growth? All set?
Okay. Okay.
As Shari had said, it's a little different for science. Science isn't tested consecutively in, in the earlier grades. And I just wanted to summarize a little bit of, of how the MCAS and how the MCAS relates to the curriculum taught. So as I said before, the K through eight science curriculum is an integrated approach where all the students learn a little bit of the earth, earth and space, life, physical, and technology. And once they get into the high school, the science courses are all subject specific. So the MCAS, the fifth grade, oh my God, fifth grade MCAS reflects the curriculum for grades K through five. They take after K through five, fifth grade tests, the, the fifth grade science test is that integrated test. Same deal with grade eight. It's based on the curriculum for grades six through eight, again, the integrated science test. And for graduation, the grade nine or grade 10 test is subject specific. And as I said, our students take the biology test. But there's also other tests available in the Commonwealth, introductory physics, a technology, or chemistry. And all these MCAS tests are based on a full year, subject specific. So our students are enrolled in biology in grade nine. So they take the test and we get our scores. But when we report scores for the district, it's, they're, they're in 10th grade, but they've already taken their test. So, so we want to report out with the math and English scores as well. So I just wanted to give you that information.
Okay, so we've looked at all the data. You've been given all the data and there have been a lot of, a lot of conversations with the department chairs, with the principals, with the curriculum coordinators in looking at the MCAS data and what are some of the causes for the MCAS variation? I think some of them might be obvious, but we're also digging a little bit deeper. I know that a few years ago, there were teacher layoffs. We now have increased teacher to student ratio, which also we have a strain on resources, so budget cuts in areas of curriculum assessment supplies. We've got very outdated curriculum materials, especially in, I want to say, science. We need to look at math and we've even started discussing the ELA. And I, I hate to leave out social studies and history because they're a big piece of it too. They just don't get tested, so sometimes they get put on the back burner, but they are just as important as well. We've also had with the teacher layoffs, the closing of schools, some multiple changes in the schools that the students have attended. So right now, if we look at our current seventh to grade, seventh graders to ninth graders, they have possibly changed schools about three times in their career unexpectedly. Yes.
When you say changed schools possibly three times, give me an example, please.
I'm, I'm gonna, since I wasn't here at that point, I'm going to defer it to Peter.
Because we close the north, then we close the center, and those students move around the district to the Woodsdale.
So, so it's a student that's in the, having public schools that physically changed the building?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, it was outside of the natural progression from, I want to say graduating from one school and going into the next grade to the next school. So these were additional changes on top of the natural.
And, you know, when you're a fourth grader or fifth grader, you know, seventh grader, eighth grader, ninth grader, every time you transition to a new school building, there's an adjustment period. You're going to school with different students that you, I mean, Abington's a small town, but there's a lot of research on the transitions between schools impacting, having a negative impact on, on student learning.
And we do also have an unusual change between grade six and grade seven. Most towns have a grade six, seven, and eight middle school or grade five to eight middle school, and we shift for just two years. So students have a transition between grade seven and grades eight and nine, which is not the same as other students.
But that, Abington's always had that, though.
We have always done it, but it doesn't, students still have a slide between the transition for schools that other middle school students might not have, even though historically it's been part of Abington's experience. Most, most towns don't have the junior high type of transition. They have more of a middle school, three or four grade long.
And that, that's true, but I think this slide specifically talks to the closing of schools and the moving of kids around the district.
We also have a higher transient population here in Abington. So what that means is that we might have students popping into fifth grade coming from a different district using a different ELA textbook or different, using a different writing curriculum or science curriculum. And then they come in and they might leave, or they come in, they might end up going to a private school or vocational school. So there's a lot of movement in and out of the district. And it is difficult to, with, with a whole bunch of students coming in, have a set curriculum because we want to have that differentiated instruction so that all students can learn. But we do have that higher population.
Can I just, what, a sense for higher population, like what's, is there a percentage, the number of students? Like what is the transient population?
What's the number on that?
Yeah, like you're on a percentage.
I'll have to get that for you. I can find that out. And then also, as we saw going through the data, varying ability among cohorts. So we did see that some of the cohorts, in some years, they can perform better, not always, but sometimes you do have that group of kids that they do perform well, so.
With that transient population, we have a certain percentage with Abington which you're going to get. But how do we compare it to other towns around here with percentage wise?
I can look that data up for you. I'll be happy to get that. We also have, I believe, an increased, and we can look at this as well, increased ELL population moving in. Part of that, and moving out, yeah.
So a student who comes to the Abbott Public Schools who doesn't speak English, let's say they move into the school department, the month before the test is given, they're required to take this test.
They are.
And their scores are on that sheet that you saw.
So some recommendations. Refocus priority and curriculum. So previously, there's been a large focus on math and ELA. And this is predominantly due to what we're required to provide or test the students in regarding the state. We've got the new Common Core state standards, which is another factor that teachers are now adjusting their curriculum to meet the Common Core state standards, which actually I should have had on that last slide as well. So making that adjustment with math and ELA, and now the state is saying, well, you're also going to be accountable in science, and science is a heavy hitter. So after having some programs put in place and getting some things settled with math and ELA. So after having some programs put in place and getting some things settled with math and ELA, there's another big push with the science as well. It's a big factor. Our curriculum for science is, I'm gonna use the word extremely outdated. We need to obtain an inquiry-based science curriculum where it's more than, of course, we need the textbooks to go along with it, but science is very hands-on, it's very inquiry-based, it's discovery. And these students need to learn a lot of these skills. And a lot of it comes from the elementary schools on up. So it's not only looking at a more inquiry-based science curriculum for, actually, this should be pre-K through 6, but also to continue to update materials for grades 7 through 12 as well. We are looking into a new math program. So right now, we're using everyday math. Many, many districts, especially along the South Shore, are moving away from everyday math. A lot of the methods, it's a spiraling curriculum. And I know that when they get to, and Meg, feel free to jump in, the middle and high school, then the techniques become a little bit different. Everyday math is not aligned to the Common Core state standards, which is a huge issue. They originally told us that they were aligned, and we're finding out more and more it's not. So teachers are having to spend their time instead of having that curriculum and instruction piece, pulling different supplemental pieces of information and lessons in order to adjust and hit those Common Core state standards. I'm working very closely with the principals and with the department chairs to, in both math, ELA, and science, to align the curriculum. And I think that that is a big piece. Having looked at the curriculum maps, that's something we need to fully align so that the curriculum does spiral. We have consistent vocabulary, consistent concepts for these students, and they're not jumping from one thing to another by grade level. We're also working very heavily on data analysis. We have common planning time the principals have put into place. I'm very heavily involved in working with the principals, especially at elementary school, and I know the department chairs in looking at the data. But it's not just looking at the data, it's taking that data and being able to inform instruction on how to increase instruction, how we can increase the MCAS scores, and how we can increase student engagement. We also are gonna look at subgroup data. So subgroup, meaning specific populations within the population as a whole. Possibly free and reduced lunch, gender, our ELL population. Get the data on the transient population to see what those scores are as well. And also look for some funding and resources outside the district, which is always a good thing, to help bring in money to help support the curriculum as well. Did you guys want to add anything?
Let me see if there are any questions.
Okay. I just, just as a side note, I've been in the district for four months. And I have to tell you, based on what I just gave you for the reasons for the MCAS variation and the recommendations, I really have to say I'm impressed with the teachers, I'm impressed with the principals. It's a very positive place to work, and they're very resourceful. It is, the sustainability is gonna be hurting to not have the curricular materials, to not have the instructional materials that we need. But the teachers, I have to say, they keep plugging away. And they've, they've got a great attitude, and they really do work very hard, along with the principals. So it's a, it's a great combination, it's a, it's a great work environment, but we need to be able to get them what they need to be able to teach what they need to teach.
Can I just quickly, before, I know you're gonna ask a lot of questions, but I want to make sure I thank Sherry, and Liz, and Meg, and Diane for their, for their work on the presentation. Before you got this presentation, we had a lot of discussion about how to provide this information. And we decided consciously to provide it as-is, just not to provide any spins or anything, just the facts. And that's what you have here. And I'm, because we're not satisfied with the achievement level. I don't think anybody is. If you saw a bar graph for Abington that came to financing, you would see that 80 percent of the districts in Massachusetts are better funded over the same time period than Abington was. We have not been appropriately funded for the last four years for that cohort group, that bar of funding. And that's how some of these things happened. So I'm, part of this presentation wasn't just the facts, but it was also, what do, what do we need to do about it to improve achievement in Abington? And so I just, I just wanna, I know you're gonna ask a lot of questions, and we're not done, but I want to thank them for their work in the analysis of the data. And I want to thank our principals, and I want to thank our teachers for the work that they've done on this. You know, some, a very good question you asked was about the transient population. We'll get the, I know you'll, we'll get the exact quantity, number about that. But we know that because, for example, of the number of ELL students, English language learners, that we have moving in, and the resources and the supports that we need to find them compared to surrounding districts. So we know that's the case. And again, we'll get that number. So a lot of decisions need to be made with this data with continuing, you know, we have limited resources. We're not gonna have a wealth of resources next year. That makes this data even more important. And as you see the budget presentations, you'll see things that address this. So I just needed to say that as we open the questions. So, thanks.
I guess one of the things that I noticed, and I did talk with the Beaverbrook people, third and fourth grade ELA and math seem to do much poorer than the fifth and sixth graders. And there would seem to also be a drop-off from third to fourth in general, and then an uptick in fifth and sixth. And then if you go to seventh and eighth, from whatever I can gather out of this.
Yes.
Seventh was, went down a little bit, went up a little bit in areas. Eighth grade seemed to stay steady or go up a little bit. Is there a reason for all that, such fluctuation, especially in grades 3 through 6, where third through fourth goes down and then goes up?
Well, in grade 3, it's the first experience that students have had with a standardized test.
I think we're gonna need people to go to the microphone for the question, sorry.
In grade 3, it's the first experience students have had with a standardized test. There's also a relationship between literacy levels and socioeconomic groups. And I know that I recall Marilyn Weber saying a few years ago that for the first year in kindergarten screening, they were having a population of students who had never handled a book before. So really, in the first few years of school, we're accounting for some deficits in impoverished literacy environments. So why did the grades dip between 3 and 4? Well, in grade 4, a new item is added, long composition. So in addition to writing short, maybe two paragraph answers to a question, grade 4 students are having their first opportunity for writing an extended piece. And that, that piece is about five paragraphs on average. It's a narrative. And students aren't writing from reading a text, they have to write from experience. And they don't have any other sources but their memory to go from. So that's a hard writing task. But as students have additional practice in grades 5 and 6 with being in school, with improving their literacy behaviors and exposure to text, you see that score move up. Now, why does it dip a little in grade 7? That's one of the transition years that Mr. Schaefer spoke from. Our students are going from grade 6 to grade 7. In grade 6 is a reading comprehension year. Grade 7 is another year with an essay. That essay only happens for 7 and 10. So the addition, in a sense, the tests are sort of apples and oranges in that there is another complex item that takes 90 minutes of students' attention that's added in those years. So that might account for the dip in even test fatigue. Our students tend to do really well on the long compositions in comparison to the state. It's the reading comprehension in the shorter work that really, really dips a little bit. Does that help to explain it a little bit? Okay, thank you.
And now, I notice the same thing.
Meg might want to speak.
Almost identical.
It's almost identical, and I think one of the things that the district really has going forward is Sherry. In grade 3, for example, and grade 4, there's been a whole shift with the new, the new frameworks in terms of where fractions is placed. So it's more appropriately, it's more developmentally appropriate for students. So that doesn't become such a struggle for them later on. And our curriculum materials don't reflect that. And we've had curriculum coordinators who have only come back in the past two years. But now we have someone who's full-time, looking at curriculum, aligning curriculum, making sure that the right content is being taught in the right spots until we can get materials that reflect the order in which topics need to be mastered when we're teaching from a sequential, I'm sorry, a spiraling curriculum.
The other piece of information I might add with the decrease of failure at grade 10 is in grade 10, those are the highest stakes of all. If students don't pass those tests, or their retest, they don't graduate. And there is not that same sort of high stake attached to student performance in grades 3 through 8. There's no retention, there's no penalty. Students are certainly identified for tutoring and extra help. But if you don't pass in grade 10, that's a much more serious consequence. There's also the added incentive that if students do exceptionally well, they have scholarships afforded to them by the state, the Abigail and John Adams. So there's an incentive in grade 10 that's a little bit different than the other grades. And students are closer to the exit point. So that might account for that uptick as they get closer to grade 10.
Thank you.
And just one more piece to add with the addition of the Common Core that has come in over the last couple of years. The MCAS test is now starting to incorporate questions related to the Common Core state standards. So it's still a work in progress aligning that curriculum to readjust it from the old standards to the new Common Core, which is being tested on.
Really, are you on something? In relation to that, as we move away from MCAS, as we are, we're moving into PARK, are we making, you know, are we thinking forward about how, if we're doing poorly here with MCAS, and we're moving into PARK, and everyday math isn't even aligned with the Common Core, are we thinking forward about how do we get to that next step for our students to have them perform better with using the new system that we will be using?
What I can say is the district has been focused in its professional development initiatives, for instance, this year on the teacher evaluation model. And as we become more comfortable with that model, the professional development and support for the Common Core state standards will move to the foreground. There have been changes happening in the background, but I think both Meg and Diane have mentioned the need for new science texts that really address the nature of the curriculum. And I think we're looking at, if I might, may I quote you?
It depends what you're gonna say.
Well, there are some people who realize that their grandchildren are coming to Abington with the same textbook experience as their children had. That we have textbooks and mathematics, as I understand it, that are now a generation old. And in math examples, we're referring to dates that are 20 years old. So I think that the materials need to shift. And we have been economically challenged, and the textbook series is a huge investment. And it's prudent to wait until the standards are, have been adopted by the states. We have 2011 standards. And that the textbook companies are still moving to shift to that. So we are making that move. We are making the move in English Language Arts to have more complex texts available to students. And the writing articulation is really where we're going to have to work. Because it used to be in grade 4, all grade 4 students would work on narratives and stories that they would tell from experience. And in grade 7, they would do persuasive essays. And in grade 10, they would analyze a novel. All of that would be done from memory. Well, now, students in the new test, they're going to have to do a narrative, an analysis, and a research simulation, three different kinds of essays. So we have to move our curriculum in that way. And it won't be from what students remember, but what they can read independently. So we've identified the areas where we need to move, and the fact that we do need in some places new materials. But the next professional development initiative will be in that alignment and preparation. But knowing where we are is probably the most important thing in identifying where we need to go.
And all of those items are gonna be priorities, if I could, in our budget. But please remember that these students will take this PARK test on a computer. And we don't have the computer and the technology infrastructure to support that yet. And we need these curriculum items, and we need to add teachers in front of students in Abington. So there are, there are three major needs that we have in Abington with regard to resources.
If I can just add to that, too. As Peter was saying, in terms of our student, our teacher-to-student ratio and our outdated curriculum, if, and what I was saying before, we've got some really, really creative teachers, but it comes to the point where the material becomes so outdated, and our ratios are high, very high, that the focus becomes more on managing the class and having these old materials rather than being able to manage a smaller group with updated materials, which is reflective of what we're seeing as well with some of the scores. As far as PARK goes, it's, it's still a little bit, I want to say, wobbly. We all met, the administrators met today about that. And they're still piloting the PARK. So if we focus, if our focus is on the curriculum, we know the Common Core is here. Let's focus on that, that's stable. We can get everybody in alignment, we can get that vertical alignment going so that we are gonna be prepared for that PARK test.
Sherry, if I could add, the thing to remember is that the PARK and MCAS are assessment tools. PARK is meant to measure the Common Core state standards and Massachusetts' vision of the Common Core state standards. So the what we are testing, regardless of the format, is still the same. So we still want student to, students to achieve in math, English, language arts, and social studies the Common Core state standards. PARK and MCAS are assessment systems. They're not the content of the curriculum. So regardless of which test, the content has been upgraded, if you will, in terms of what is rigorous preparation for college and career. So whichever acronym we have, we still have the same curriculum demands in front of us. So it's, it's now. It's not two years, it's now. Because those are the standards from 2011 that we have to answer to regardless of the system.
Just another addition. And unlike when they implemented the previous frameworks and they did it in a transition, this time they didn't. And so you're trying to figure out how to move curriculum at the same time that students are in it. So for example, our grade 8 curriculum now covers what traditionally is in the first five chapters of an algebra class. That means we've gotta move those five chapters back, if you can think of it as your traditional algebra class. But we're doing that as we have kids who are currently in grade 8 curriculum who haven't had necessarily the grade 7 curriculum to provide them the background for that. And so that's why we're trying to spend a lot of time filling gaps and really understanding what was taught the previous year, particularly with the spiraling curriculum in terms of now we're teaching for mastery. So as this process moves along, every third grader should know certain skills, every fourth grader should know certain skills. And I think that's one of the things that PARK does help us do, and the Common Core helps us do, is to identify what needs to be mastered by what level.
I'm just gonna put in a plug for science, just 'cause. I will tell you that I've, I've done a lot of work with the next-generation science standards. These are coming out. They're on hold, they're on hold. I've gone to some workshops, and, and every, this past year, we've been waiting. Oh, they're coming out in March of 2014. Oh, they're coming out, you know, in October. And the latest and the greatest is because of, thanks, you guys, because of PARK and Common Core and teacher evaluation, we're gonna hold off on the next-generation science standards. And they're still actually working to finalize the standards. Massachusetts is one of the 26 states that have been forerunners in creating new science standards, way overdue. But from what I've seen, and what we've talked about, the elementary piece is doing a 180. Very, very different. But it is, it's inquiry, it's the hands-on, it's, it's, it's just not memorize the terminology, but, but do the science. In science, again, as Liz has said about the Common Core, you need to read science text. You need to understand conceptual things. And that's what we do, do in science, to help with the literacy piece. But I'm holding off on the standards for a couple of years. And, and then after that, it'll be a few years before the MCAS catches up. But we're still, you know, they still need to know this science curriculum that, that, that's there for another few years. So that's what I got.
So to support Diane, in terms of the science, one of the first item prototypes that was released from PARK for grade 3 was a selection from a grade 3 science textbook that students had to read about the life cycle of the caterpillar and monarch butterfly and be able to move from the reading, which was new to them, the correct parts into a graphic organizer. So that's very different. into a graphic organizer. So that's very different. That the, it's not different that it's nonfiction, but it is different that it's a science textbook, which is why it's so important to have accurate, up-to-date science materials for students to read in the elementary school.
Can I have a response?
Yes.
Are you thinking that it's that, that students aren't grasping what they're reading in the question, or is it the process in getting it onto the paper?
I think it's the process of unpacking the question and paying attention to what they read. The open response items always close with using specific information from the text. It could and should say, use two direct quotes from the text to support your answer, and it doesn't. So when students think, I have to refer to the text, they do so generally and not specifically. And that makes it hard for them to get a complete score. They might have the gist of an answer, it might be, and what they do get is they get half of the four points. They get two of them on average, but they generally don't collect all the information. And I think it's partly because they don't return to the reading to identify the key details. So what all the English teachers, grade seven through 11 are doing, because we do have students in grade 11 who receive some remediation due to their MCAS scores and their proficiency plans, we've selected as a team goal that students will be able to identify key details and explain their significance to the overall theme or thesis of the piece. So we're working not so much on writing, because it's not a matter of grammar or punctuation, it's getting sufficient information to answer the question completely. As an average score, I think only once in grade seven, a year ago, did the average score for any one open response item equal three, which is a complete answer. Usually, we have two and change as an average for our open response scores. So we really need to get students to come back and collect all the information. And that's why I think it's in the process. They might not identify it, but they might think it's enough. It's good enough. I've written enough. And they really need to take it one more detail to have a complete answer. Does that make sense?
I did, I thought it was a great presentation. When I got the handout, I was a little rolling my eyes, 'cause I'm like, geez, these things can be brutal. You guys did a great job. But I do have just a couple of quick questions. On the fifth slide, about eighth grade science, just as far as the advanced, any idea like why it is so low, even at the state level? I mean, there's like nobody in the advanced, whether it's in Abington or in the state.
The eighth grade test is given in May, the, oh yeah. The eighth grade test is given at the end of May. And it's a test, as, as we've said, it's not a high-stakes test. There, there's no repercussion for them. They take the test, you know, wait out the last month of school and go home. That's our, that's, I think, one of the key things. And also because of you looking at earth and space and life and physical science, I mean, you've gotta be rolling with, with this material through the year. And you still have a few weeks left of school, May, middle of May till, you know, a few weeks later. You technically have to, you know, if you look at it, you have to cover all of that by May 20th or the 18th or something. And that's tough.
So is this something with the test, more so on the test side than it is what we're trying to do here? Because it, because everybody's missing the vote as far as trying to get into advanced. I mean, it's not like we're doing-
Currently with the Massachusetts frameworks, it's set up so that it's, the frameworks are set. Here are your frameworks, K through two, you pick what you're gonna do. And then three through five, and then six through eight. So one very important piece that sometimes can be lacking in a lot of districts, which is part of my role now, is that vertical alignment. Okay, kindergarten, you're doing this, grade one, you're doing this, and two. So a lot of times, you might have overlap of the same subject area, and it's kind of hit or miss as to what you should do at each grade level, the way it's set up right now. So hopefully, there will be adjustment with that. And in grades five and eight, everything is fair game. So it's not subject-specific necessarily. And a piece of it, too, as Meg had pointed out on one of her slides, I think it was arithmetic, there was one question, and it threw, you know, it threw all of the data off. So it's just, it's very hit or miss.
Which is why we have to be very responsible about the data analysis, because you don't want one question to create a situation where you're gonna, you know, change a program or you're going to purchase resources. So we look for trends in this data.
One advantage of the English Language Arts test has over, I think, both math and science and history when we gave it. The questions are all presented in related sections. So you have a first reading, eight multiple choice questions, and open response. Next reading, eight multiple choice questions and open response. And all the questions relate back to a particular reading. But when I looked at the science test, question 11 could be on cells, question 12 could be on geology, question 13 could be on the function of machines, and none of them refer back to a reading except in four specific instances. So not only does someone have to know their science, but between items, they have to shift complete gears between various content areas within science. So rather than have one reading in eight biology questions, one reading in eight earth science questions, it's sort of like a random-
It's very content-specific.
It's content-specific, but individual items don't build to something in items, like all the biology questions aren't in a row. So that can also make students who are accustomed to studying those topics in clusters have to shift back and forth. So it's hard to, without a context, to sometimes answer those questions. English does provide that context, though.
Meg, I think you had, there was, in regards to the 10th grade math, you had made something about extra credit on the school report card. What did you mean when you said that?
If you made a bump from proficient to advanced of 10% or more from the previous year, or reduce the number of students from needs improvement, from warning to needs improvement, did I say that right? Then you could earn extra points towards the district's report card. So last year, we had 35% of our students at the high school in advanced, and this year we had, I'm sorry, last year we had 34, this year we had 45%. So we made that 10% bump, so we earned what they call extra credit towards our report card. In other words, we, we made a big jump. So they recognize that.
Okay. And what does that mean in the whole scheme of things?
It helps to improve our CPI and their, our performance level one through five as the, the way the state ranks us.
Okay.
You also, you know, can miss some of those extra credit points. And something I should mention, as people look at this data, you may see variances between different reports from the state. Because I just, I know, we have a couple of anecdotal stories, you know, I know, I know there's a lot of analysis, the high school took place. And I think Terry Sullivan, you were looking at different reports on the same cohorts, the same groups of students that had a variance of students that the state provided us. So there's sometimes the state cleans up discrepancies that it has, and improves its data. And so if you're looking at something last week and looking at the data this week, there are small margins that you'll see changes in the data. Or perhaps, another example is, they'll report data to us that's inclusive of the students that are in seats in Abington. And you may be looking at a different report that is inclusive of students that are in seats in Abington and students that are out of the district that are still Abington students. And so you have to be very careful. So you'll see a variance of, of data, reporting the same fifth grade to a degree of, you know, a couple of percentage points.
Just on the, there was a slide in seventh grade on the cohort math, and it was one you had said, this is what we wanna see as far as, and then the next year, it dips off.
Yeah, and I, I, they're the same kids. And I believe it mirrored this, we were, we didn't mirror the state when we went above their line graph. But the next year, we seem to mirror the state. I don't have it in front of me, I can, oh, look at that, she is good.
Is this the one you're talking about?
That's the one. You sure that's not, I don't, I think it's grade eight. I wanna say it was, it was orange, yeah. Was it?
Yeah, cohort 2018?
Cause 2012.
Oh, cohort.
Oh, cohort, okay, all right. Let me peek at my stuff, and I can flag it.
It's on stage five.
Right, 2012, right there.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Oh, yeah. So one of the things that you like to see is the bar being above the line graph in both proficient and advanced. That means we, our students scored better than the state. And if the bar is above in advanced, then being below in proficient just means those kids really have bumped from proficient to advanced, which is something that you wanna see. In terms of the next year, you'll notice it's almost the same exact shift, but it went below the state in advanced. So that's one of those things we have to be really concerned about. And you really wanna look back and say, was there any major transitions or anything that have hap, may have happened to that particular group of kids in that particular year, to see if there was something that caused a discrepancy. I haven't gone back to-
But overall, if you looked at the different grades, and you're a parent of children, a child in the public schools, you have to be, you have to think, you have to be positive about these results, though, if you look at the cohorts. So from grade three through eight through 10-
You absolutely see improvement.
You're, you're seeing steady progress. You're seeing growth in the students.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, there's, there's many, as you know, many factors to look at besides just the raw data. There's a lot of other things going on, too. But, you know, we still, we still need those updated materials and our ratios, because the sustainability piece is-
So despite all the, the, you know, the causes, we have a, a system that, we have individuals, people that work hard, do a good job, and, and are affecting kids in a positive way as far as their academic, you know?
Absolutely, yeah. Most definitely. That's what I was trying to say toward the end of the presentation. The teachers are just, they're very creative, they're positive, and they're, they work hard.
And that's the double-edged sword for Abington, as long as I've been here. I mean, kids do well. We close schools, we lay off people, and yet the ones that are still here working with our students, the kids have still shown growth. So it's hard, you know, to have those conversations in terms of, we really still need these resources. Because we really do. But at the same time, someone in the community could say, but your kids are still doing well with what you still have, even though they're so outdated. Do you know what I mean? So it's a struggle for administrators all the time and department heads, really, but we need, you know, something in the 21st century to be teaching them. So, you know, it's those types of conversations. It's a double-edged sword, you know?
But just imagine how much more they could be doing if they actually had the materials that other people are able to work with.
And we also need to be able to keep up with what the state is throwing at us.
And I think that vertical alignment is gonna make a huge difference. Because without it, what I think some of that variance is, is gaps in knowledge.
Yes, 100%.
And if you can eliminate some of those gaps in knowledge, because you can align everything, then you're gonna see less variability from year to year.
And we've, we've already started those conversations. On our last PD day at the elementary school, we already started the vertical conversations, the vertical teamings between the grades. And I think a lot of it was an aha moment to get that off the ground, to see what each grade is doing above and below the grade the teachers are teaching at. Help each other out and see what's in the curriculum.
I mean, it's all of our jobs to push and to want our students to, to be the highest achievers, because that's how we'll ensure the best lives for them. And that's why we all do this. The backdrop for this is that we're the highest achieving state in the nation. And we are, our scores are not where they need to be. They, they, they need to improve. That doesn't mean that people aren't working hard, kids aren't getting into great colleges, out of Abington High School, and, and that people don't care about them. When you pull away from the curb at any one of our schoolhouses, you leave them with people that are gonna take care of them. And those are all things that we're very proud of, and we will continue to do. But we, we, you will see a budget presentation that includes items that specifically try to address improving achievement for kids in Abington, because that's our job. And so I just, you know, we'll be advocating for those things, and I hope that we get them. And we'll end up making tough decisions between tens of thousands of dollars in textbooks, or a staff member, or technology. And that's, that's part of January, February, March, and April.
Anyone have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Information.
Because we've already covered the informational items that I have on staff under other matters, you know what, maybe what we could do is, yeah, the, the bank acceptance is pretty easy. Every year, Abington Bank has provided a program for the fourth graders where they provide a passbook and a little bit of an education around savings. And they start them with a $5 deposit at Abington Bank. And I'd be asking, you've got a letter in your packet that, from the bank, and I'd ask the committee to accept this donation of this program.
I'm not sure to accept the Abington Bank form three course, as presented. Meg and Peter?
And then we can get to the consideration of the field trip for the Abington High School cheerleaders. We've got both Peter and Kate here with us. I don't know who, come on up.
Thank you. Our cheerleading team this fall had a very successful season. And at the state competition towards the end of November, their score earned them a qualifying bid to compete at a national competition. There are several national competitions held throughout the country. The one that most area schools go to and that our girls would like to go to is the end of March in Florida at Universal Studios. This one's chosen for a couple of different reasons. It's one of the more popular ones, so there are more high school teams that tend to be there than some of the other ones. And the other one that is held at Universal that teams go to is much earlier. It's towards the beginning of February. So it doesn't give families a lot of time to plan financially, or if the parents so choose to do fundraisers, it really limits their opportunity to do that. So what we have proposed in the material that you have is the cheerleaders would leave, it's the end of March, March 27th, they'd leave on a Thursday after school. It's the ELA Long Composition Day, so they would be in school to take the MCAS test, and then they would leave after school and go to Florida. They're, they would practice, check in, all that, all that stuff on Friday. They would compete on Saturday and Sunday, and then they would return on Monday. The itinerary that you have is very basic. It's, covers what we think would be the longest time, obviously flight information, and when the competition schedule comes out, that would change. It's based off of what other towns have done. In particular, a lot of the information we gathered came from Rockland High School, who went last year, Whitman Hansen, who has gone several times in the past couple of years, and Marshfield High School, which went last year. A number of teams qualified, not every team that qualifies goes. For example, Rockland High School qualified again this year. They will not be going. Our team last qualified five years ago, and they did go five years ago. If there are any questions in particular, we'd have the cheerleading coach, Kim Hicks, would go, as well as the associate athletic director, Kate Casey. So there would be two chaperones for, we're thinking approximately 20 girls on the team. They're forming their winter team this week, and that's the team that will go. The majority of the girls, I believe, there were 20 girls on the fall team, and 14 of them will also be doing the winter team. And then the last five to six spots will be filled by other girls, and that's the team that will go, because they'll be practicing their routine all winter, as they prepare for nationals.
That was one of them. I wondered if it was the same girls who actually won the competition that went, but that makes sense. Thank you. So if the average cost figured out, so say, we base that on 20 students going, is there a maximum amount of girls that have to go to be, to be a team to compete that would make or break this trip, I guess my question. Like, do you need 18 cheerleaders to compete, or?
No, actually, you can have up to 35, and I think 10 are- No. Actually, you can have up to 35. And I think 10 or 12 is the minimum. Don't quote me on the exact minimum, but it's a very small number that we would have no problem. And we talked about potentially having more girls go because we had more than 20 girls try out. But the issue with that is in the state of Massachusetts, you can't compete with more than 20. So, if we kept 24 girls, for example, four girls would not be able to compete from now until that national competition at the end of March. So, they'd be with the team, but they wouldn't be able to do anything. So, that was one of the challenges that we talked about. So, we're looking at, the number of girls will probably be in the 18 to 20 range, depending upon how tryouts go this week.
If they, and I went through the itinerary, if parents go, do the students stay with their... If a parent doesn't go and they're, you know, chaperoned by us, you guys, you. Where, do the students stay with their parents if the parents are there, or do they stay with the team? Because I love, you know, team meeting in Curbu, which are great, but how does that?
The way we look at it is, it's a, it's a school group that's going. So, they're going to travel as a team, just as the team would travel if they were going to a competition down the Cape. They would travel together. So, the transportation that we provide will only be for the team. And then the accommodations will be for the team. And that's one of the recommendations. Actually, every athletic director I spoke to said, make sure your team stays together. And it's your team, so you don't have five girls staying with their parents and then the rest together. So, we would have, and we put the girls in four-door room or depending upon how the math worked out. And then if parents wanted to go, we'd let them know what hotel we were staying at, but they would be responsible for their own work. And we would suggest that they stay on a different floor altogether to kind of keep it separate.
So, the students stay together with the Abington High School chaperone?
Correct.
And then if this is approved, the girls who do this fundraising outside of school can raise money?
Yes. My recommendation would be that the parents get together, and they're the ones that kind of spearhead the fundraising. That's how it worked five years ago in Abington. And the school kind of separates itself out a little bit from that, similar to how the boosters organization works, obviously. And we'll be in communication and work with them. But mainly, the parents will be responsible. That's, obviously, it's a very expensive trip, but we don't want our girls to become fundraisers all winter. I think that's something that the parents should take on, similar to how the music parents do with the band trip or the kids who are going to Italy this year. It's, parents can pay the money. Or if they want to get together and develop some fundraisers, we'd certainly work with them, but ultimately, it'd be their responsibility.
And is there a date to which Abington High has to commit to this?
The early registration date, which would save a couple hundred dollars, is January 1st. But you can register, I believe, until, I believe, February.
How would they be arranged in rooms? Would it be like a senior junior sophomore freshman combined? Or you can put four freshmen together, four seniors together? How would that?
We're not quite at that point. We've had those conversations. We looked at how they did it last time. And the cheerleading team's actually gone away in the past. And my personal opinion, obviously, I talked to Principal Sullivan and Ms. Casey and Coach Hicks, but is, you know, you kind of keep the freshmen together, the sophomores together, juniors together, and so forth. There are benefits to doing it either way, but most of the people I've talked to have recommended that. To the best that you can, obviously. There will be some grades that makes.
That really depend on what the team now becomes?
Right, exactly. We tend to, the makeup of the team is primarily freshmen and sophomores. Actually, we don't have a senior that's trying out for the winter team. So, it is a younger team.
So, our seniors that are on it now aren't going?
Correct.
Who covers the cost for the chaperones?
That would be included in the cost breakdown for each girl.
Now, on the form, it says educational objective. There really isn't an educational objective, is there?
Well, I think all of our athletic programs kind of align with our, our academic mission and our core mission. I think it's an opportunity for the girls to compete at a national competition and get that experience. I think, obviously, you know, they're not going to come back learning some specific content. But I think that experience and even the travel, the logistics of that, I think, is a very good learning experience for the kids and how to go through all that and the process. So, it's a unique educational objective, but I think it's there.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's fabulous that they're able to do that. I'm just going to get you out of time.
I mean, I'm not a cheerleader and I don't have girls, but I think some of the things they do have a lot to do with physics and balance and all of that, the way they are in the gyms.
I think it's great just that the kids are able to be kids on a trip like this. I mean, they're competing, but they're still, you know, they're with their friends and they're doing something that will, they'll remember for years.
There will be no MCAS data cheerleading next year.
But they can't wait for that to just.
And I would assume the whole team has to be in school that day, whether they're a sophomore and taking the, or?
Yes. Our expectation is that they would be there that day and Tuesday. It would be very clear. Obviously, we expect them to be there every day. But regardless, depending upon what time we get back, if it did happen to be later, we'd make every effort for it to be early, but let them know that we expect them to be there on Tuesday.
Any other questions?
I'm looking for recommendations.
Motion to, we're looking for a recommendation to, for a motion to approve the field trip for the high school cheerleaders team to compete in the Nationals in Florida, March 27th, 2014, or March 31st, 2014, as presented.
I'll make the motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike seconded by Kathy. Good luck.
Thank you.
Could I just have, Peter, I know this wasn't an agenda, but you go to our script a little bit. Could you just have a quick update on the wrestling?
Sure. So, wrestling program is, is up and running with Rockland High School. We have three students currently participating right now. We have a fourth who went over yesterday and today to observe. We'll see if he ends up joining. What I originally presented to you, I said there were seven students who were interested. Of those seven, the three that are there were part of that seven. Two others were two of our football players who are injured. One will not be able to participate, and the other is waiting for results of an MRI at the end of the week. One was ineligible, and then one decided not to go. But the kids that are going are thrilled. They absolutely love it. The coach thinks it's great. I think it's something that, long-term, could grow. The three students that are there are juniors, which I think is not a coincidence. The seniors, it's kind of too late for them. And I think the freshmen and sophomores were a little intimidated to go over to Rockland and try something new. But next year, where we have some kids in the school that will be able to promote it and push it, I think we'll be able to bring some underclassmen along, I hope.
Thanks, Paul.
The next agenda item is, we're not looking for a, an action on this tonight. Certainly open to any questions or input you have on it. But we have a calendar for next year that does not yet include the professional development schedule. But it does include the beginning of school, the end of school, some of the vacation periods. And then we'll fill that PD piece in for the next meeting.
On the August and September, just the 25th asterisk, and down below, September 24th, which is Rosh Hashanah.
Thank you, though, because it's better to hear that stuff now. And then the report on the MASC, MAS joint conference, with Kathy and I attended. And Kathy has, I know Kathy has information on that.
Everybody got a copy of my notes. You can see that we attended a lot of different sessions over the three days that were there. It was a great experience. It's nice in itself to be able to interact with other school committee people from across the state and other superintendents, see what other schools are doing. I attended a number of workshops, some of them more interesting than others. The first one was emerging technology. And I thought I'd walk away with a whole lot of stuff that I'd be able to bring back with me. But basically, the, kind of the big ideas that came out of it were with the instruction with technology takes 30 to 80% less time to reach an objective. I thought was kind of interesting. That was from a study done by the United States Department of Education. And technology is one of the things that we really need to work on. Another thing I stressed was in designing your networks to allow the non-disruptive expansion and growth in most schools that are now struggling with how to allow their systems to grow enough to meet the requirements of the PARC test when it comes online. There was a good deal of information on district determined measures, a lot of it relating to the evaluation procedure. Of course, that's what they're for. And our system has been working on them. They emphasize district determined measures are actually assessment systems that you define, do design yourself within your school system. And they emphasize that you need common administrative protocols, common scoring process, and to make sure that whatever you choose for your determined measure is a large enough sample to make reasonable determination growth. One thing that I found really interesting was a workshop I went to on putting STEAM in STEM, which is something that we're looking to do. And I wish our science and math people were still here. The people that put on this workshop were outstanding and emphasized that the arts provide a visual and kinetic and analytical thinking that you don't find in any other area. And they create a model of experiential learning. And they actually went through a number of different examples used within the science classes, both in the elementary and high school level, using either math or music or art. And the programs were amazing, and the outcomes for the kids was terrific. And I wish, hopefully, someday, we'll be able to replicate something like that here. There were a number of keynote speakers. One very interesting speaker was Jack Levin. Many of us have seen him on TV whenever there's any kind of huge killing or disaster of some kind. And he talked about what makes kids go bad and what can we do to help. And it was really interesting some of the characteristics he came up with. Crime peaks between 3:00 PM and the time parents get home from school. People who commit violent acts are seek notoriety. So, what does the, do the television stations do about giving notoriety, notoriety they're looking for? Things that we need to do is reduce positive attention for these types of activities. Establish anti-bullying programs, which we are trying to do, and the culture of silence, which is very difficult among students, and get in touch with students who are alone and troubled. And those are kind of hard to identify, too. But we need to provide more help to them. One particular workshop that I thought was very interesting, could be very helpful to us, was on superintendent's evaluation. Within the district, we've sent a lot of people out. We've learned a lot about the new evaluation procedure. We've done a lot of work creating that, working with the, within the school system to get it started. And we are actually part of that because we have to use the new evaluation system to evaluate Peter on next year, which means that we need to understand it. And we haven't been sent out to all the workshops to do it. As we know, the student needs to, the superintendent needs to align his goals with the standards and the strategic goals of the system, which Peter has done. Some of the early adopters, part of the process in doing the evaluation was to actually teach the process to the school committee in an open session, which I don't think is a bad idea. The big difference between the old system evaluation and going to the new system is a really emphasis on evidence, trying to make it less objective because you have all these various pieces of evidence to support how you reach the goal. Actually, in the new procedures with the superintendent, he sets his goals. There needs to be a mid-cycle review, which is basically updating, seeing how, what purpose is there, what adjustments need to be made in order to reach the goals. And then the evaluation procedure. And as a board, we need to decide who that person is who's going to write, do the composite, and handle all the available material. And with the superintendent, there are a lot of pieces of evidence, lots of materials that we need to deal with. And the other thing that is really interesting is we're used to, you're, you're not, unless you're exemplary or whatever the top score is, you're not good enough. And the way the new procedure works, proficient is the top. And if someone is not proficient, you have to give evidence as to why. And that is if they don't reach proficient, you need to give evidence. But if you choose to say that this person's exemplary, you have to show what they've done to go above and beyond, that makes them exemplary because proficient is the top. So, if you say they're beyond proficient, then you also need the evidence to do that, which is another interesting thing to remember. And then finally, the delegate assembly. I cast the votes as you asked me to. And all of the resolutions passed with the exception of number two, which is the one that we discussed in depth about whether they should hold off on the PARC. And a couple of things that were amended to that was that the state should provide through grant or other means the funding needed to accommodate the PARC if they're going to implement it right away. And that application should be made to the state auditor for the implementation of PARC to be deemed an unfunded mandate. Therefore, it would secure the funding, the increased funding that would be needed. Anyone have any questions?
Can I just thank Kathy for going with me because it was, you know, we'll do is we'll take the program and divide it up. And Kathy will go to sessions. I'll go to different sessions. And then we compare notes and have a discussion about what we saw, go to the, the larger groups together. And they are informative. And, you know, you bring all that information back to the district. And I think any time you go to valuable professional development, you know, that's what you do. And so, you know, really, what Kathy's done here is been very comprehensive in what, what was, what was available and what was taken from the conference. So, thank you.
I have one question. On the Thursday session with the vocation tech, the summer reading program?
It was wonderful. It sounded like a wonderful program. They implemented it because, of course, students coming, coming into vocational programs, literacy isn't their strength. And they have to pass the same MCAS tests that our students do. And I'm trying to find that page in my notes. So, what they did is they chose one book that everyone in the school read for their summer reading.
And this was the high school level?
This is the high school. This is, it's a vocational technical high school, some, just like social vocation tech. Everyone in the school read the same book. And I mean, not just the students, but the teachers, the administrators, the janitor. Everyone in the building had the same experience with the same book. Now, what they did do is they made, they had a, within each of their classes, when they came back to school, there was an accountability piece that was decided upon by the teacher. But the real benefit to it was that in teaching through the year, they could make reference to the book. So, there were a lot of book discussions going along, and it really increased the level of students' interest in reading because you had all those outside connections that you could make while you're going through it.
Actually, doing similar program. I don't know if you want to jump in on that, Terry?
Seven through 12, because the middle school's doing one, too.
We're reading Unbroken, 1912, one book was, one was a school initiative. But it's during the school year, not the summer. And it was under our school choice money. So, we've, first time we've been able to fund it. Maybe we'll be able to continue that, I guess, something to think about for the summer. But our issue's always been, we want to provide the students the book.
Right. And so, staff and students are ready. And is that, are the, is?
And is that, are the, uh, is everyone reading it? Because last time, the seniors had it.
Sorry, Terry.
The seniors hadn't got the book. You have them now.
I thought you were asking Terry questions.
No, I was saying, at our, when it came up at one of our last meetings, the seniors had received.
Very popular book, we had trouble getting them all at once.
What do you think of the book, Mike?
A lot of great information, Kathy. Thank you, Ellen, on our behalf, I'm reporting back.
Next item is, um, this, my summary evaluation. So what you have in your packet is, um, a summary from me. And this is just a change in the date rather than the copy that you have. The only difference is the copy in the packet says December twenty ninth, two thousand and thirteen. And it should say tonight's date, December tenth, two thousand and thirteen.
I think, um, we all, the committee together, we, um, discussed this. And we have seen these documents before because they're our last, um, school years. These were, they were presented before. Um, and we've received, I've received feedback from the, um, committee members, um, besides Paul as he wasn't here during most of that school year. So in saying that, in summary, like say, in using a guide to rubrics for superintendents, administrators and teachers, which provides us with forty-three different standards, indicators, elements and descriptions in which to judge Superintendent Schaefer's performance, we feel that he has set forth appropriate and worthy smart goals for both himself and the district. Documentation in regard to his work and effectiveness in these forty-three areas were duly note, reported. We understand that some of these goals continue to be an ongoing, ongoing process, such as providing optimal class sizes and the alignment of the curriculum to the common core. In, in these, we support these endeavors. Having said that, we, the committee, feel that in the school year two thousand and twelve, thirteen, Superintendent Schaefer provided a comprehensive and detailed assessment of his performance and abilities that the committee deems acceptable. Does anyone have anything else to add?
I think, no, you've done a great job. Um, you know, we have tough budget situations in this town. And year after year after year, you pull the system through and do overall management. I think everybody needs to realize how great a job you do.
Thank you, Mike. The only thing I would like to say is that, um, is this last piece that I put in my summary, and I believe in this quite a bit, um, so I put it in there. And I'd like to just reiterate it. Um, any success that we've had is directly attributed to the work of a dedicated and skilled Abington Public School Department administrative team, faculty and staff. I'm also fortunate to have benefited from a school committee, which is entirely invested and only invested in the, in the success and the well-being of the town's children. These elements coupled with students and families who daily make me proud to serve them have been crucial. The capacity of the School Department of Abington has only been limited by the lack of inadequate resources for education. The, um, following, the documents that follow that are, uh, my pilot plan from last year. Although there are only two goals, in the, um, specific action planning, you'll see, um, there are innumerable goals, like aligning the curriculum. And those elements that are ongoing, I've provided a summary of all of that. And then I provided the rubric and those elements that I focused on. And, um, so those are all in there. The next item is the employee agreement. Oh, sorry. That'd be a good thing.
So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the superintendent's schools evaluation as presented. Mike, Kathy?
I abstain.
As he was newly elected to the committee last spring.
So... What you're getting, um, is a copy of, uh, an employee agreement for me that extends my contract for the, uh, for F Y sixteen through F Y twenty. The, um, this is not substantively different than what you've seen over the last month. Um, you received a copy that had, uh, changes to it, um, last night in, um, housekeeping changes to it. And, um, helped provide better clarity to the document. And this agreement does not increase the dollar package for me and the overall, um, cost of this or the value of this to Abington in any way. Um, those will be, uh, the salary reopeners will be discussed for F Y sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen as those years occur. Um, this, um, the changes in this, again, do not change any value amount that's already been, that hasn't already previously been established to the compensation package, um, overall. And, uh, it extends those contract, it extends my contract for those years.
I think, I mean, having just done the evaluation, I, you know, I'd like to kind of reiterate what Mike said, that, um, you know, pleased that you do such a great job for the district and are happy that you stay.
Very much. I want to build a school in Abington.
Me too.
Agreed.
Questions, comments?
If I could just, on, um, just as far as the contract, I just wanted to make you know in professional development on section two, um, it's, it's a thousand dollars. And, you know, at, at some point, you know, Peter wants to take additional courses, you know, I think we'd have to consider increasing that amount because a thousand dollars for graduate level courses isn't really going to get him much. So, you know, just, I just wanted to put that out there as far as this contract goes. You know, I don't think Peter wants to change it now, but at some point, we may have to consider increasing that a little bit.
I appreciate that. And I explained to Paul, um, about this, that, um, I've got all of my credits for my doctoral degree and I've passed my, uh, tests for it. I have not written my dissertation. That's a little item that takes, um, every Saturday for, um, many, many months, you know, a year and a half, right, Dr. Thomas? And, um, my children are at an age where I, where I want to be at things and in a family that I want to do things with on the weekends rather than writing my dissertation. So, um, that and my job requires a lot of me. So I'm either, I'm either trying to stay married and be a father and do my job. Um, and so, um, I'm kidding about the staying married. I do want to stay married. Glad you clarified that. But it's, it's taken me, it's, it's been, I am, I'm not doing the graduate work. So, yeah.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I've worked with a lot of different superintendents in my years in education. And Peter has the strongest, um, sense of commitment to the kids and the greatest strength of integrity of any of the administr, the superintendents I've worked with. And I'm so glad that we've got him in Abington.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, and if I could just say, like, I, I'm the new guy on the, uh, new person on the committee. And I'm not going to say this eloquently as Kathy, but as a person, I mean, Peter's, you know, he's, he's, he's top-notch, he's committed to his job and the kids in Abington. And I think we're very fortunate to have him. And I think, you know, you're, you're, this extension, you know, doesn't kick in for another year and a half. But it's nice to know that we have you, you know, driving the, the ship. And there's going to be continuity going forward. And, you know, I think the results of the, 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 the MCAS and, while you're not happy with those, it's great to hear, but I think we're doing very well, you know, with the limited resources we have. And that's because of your leadership. And I, you know, I think this contract is very, you know, warranted. And I appreciate you, you know, staying with us.
Thank you.
I was just going to agree with what's been said. And I was going to just say that, um, Peter's communication skills, um, dealing with good, bad, all the multiple issues, um, are just so impressive. He's got a great sense of humor, which he just demonstrated.
If nothing else, then we're looking for a motion to approve the extension of superintendent of schools contract as presented. Make that motion. Kathy second.
Second.
Ellen, Ellen Beba.
Under dates to remember, uh, Wednesday, December eleventh is the Abington High School Holiday Concert at seven o'clock. Uh, December eighteenth is the Woodsdale Holiday Concert at the Feroleo Middle School at seven P M. December nineteenth is the Feroleo Ho- Holiday Concert at the Feroleo at seven P M. December twentieth, the Abington Community Band Holiday Concert at Abington High School at seven P M. On December twenty-third, uh, Wednesday, January first through, I'm sorry, Wednesday, January first is the holiday vacation. January seventh, two thousand and fourteen is our next school committee meeting at seven P M. And at that point, there'll be a, uh, at seven thirty that evening, there'll be a preliminary budget hearing for the F Y fifteen budget. On Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, we have a school committee meeting at seven P M. And we have a report of the assistant superintendent for people personnel services.
Great, thank you. In your packet, you'll see the memo, um, and requesting a motion to approve the additional home education programs for two students, one in ninth grade and one in tenth grade for the remainder of this school year.
Question, Dr. Thomas? Looking for a motion to approve the additional home education programs for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year as recommended by District Thomas. Mike second. Ellen, Ellen Beba.
The next piece is on our E L L, um, update. And I just wanted to go over what has been in your packet regarding the fluctuation of our E L L population, um, this school year. So we've had an additional fourteen E L L students have moved into Abington, um, this year, which is rather large. I have spoken to you about that. Um, and you see the analysis is really looking at the number of students, the level of E L L need, the grade level, the locations, um, and then what would be needed to meet these students' needs in terms of E L L support. So if we could review, um, just for a few moments, in terms of the fourteen students. And actually, this is one of our transient populations. So I know that Mr. Higley at one point had said, you asked us some questions, if you recall in the past, about E L L. And how are you adhering to the compliance piece? We've been able to adhere to many parts of it, um, simply because it's a transient population. They move it in, they move it out. Or, um, the levels vary, so they're high levels, so they're able to be immersed. Um, but what we're seeing, the trend this year in particular, is that the amount of students coming in, there's a greater level one and level two, um, group, which if you turn to the next page, you see in terms of compliance for students that are entering, and they're all assessed by our E L L teachers. Um, and if they fall into the level one, um, and level two categories, then they recommend, um, two point five hours per day to a full day of direct ESL instruction delivered by a licensed ESL teacher. And then if you move into level three, four, five, six, it all goes up. Um, and you'll see for level three, it's one, two hours per day of direct ESL instruction delivered by a licensed ESL teacher. And then in level four, it's two point five hours of direct ESL instruction per week delivered by a licensed ESL teacher. And then bridging in level five is ESL, um, two point five hours of direct instruction per week delivered by the licensed ESL teacher. And then six is really when you get into, there's no longer classification of the ESL and the E L L, um, by the ESL teacher and they're, and they're immersed into the classroom. So the, um, the, the concern that we really have this year is that we need to hire now, um, to be able to address the needs of this population, which seems to be growing in Abington rather quickly, um, with the number of students moving in, particularly in the lower levels. Um, meaning they're coming in and they're being assessed at levels one and two, but also, um, the students are coming in and they're all over the district at all different grade levels. Um, we've been able to, um, use different strategies and tools as we've been doing over the course of the years in terms of being able to use iPads and, and replacing students with teachers, of course, that have some supports and knowledge in terms of, um, instruction. But now the need is really growing in terms of the amount of frequency that these students need to be pulled to be receiving direct service. So we've made a recommendation, um, to the superintendent. We are in the process of, um, North River Collaborative. We have a contracted service, um, with them for our E L L programming. And, um, it's really tough to find licensed staff at this time of year. Um, but we've posted, we've been accessing, Kathy's also, um, assisted because her daughter's actually an E L L teacher. Um, and we've also been accessing different, um, listservs and doing postings. So, um, we're hoping that we're going to be able to, um, hire somebody within the next couple of months. Um, but the one that we did have, um, decided to not move to Massachusetts. Um, so that was disappointing. So we have another person that's in, right now, being interviewed. Um, we're going through that process, so we're just waiting to see. It's one of those positions that if kids are out there, I tell them, this is really what you need to go into for college-level interests in education. Because E L L is growing with a whole new law. Um, this is one of those jobs where we can't get enough of E L L teachers. Um, so, that's where we're at. We're hoping that we will have additional supports and staff hired within the coming month or two. And I will continue to update you on E L L because it is, um, the transient population that, um, is, is moving rather quickly into Abington. And then you're also, um, you know, seeing how we're addressing it also through our student achievement pieces as well. There are also new regs that I've also done presentation on, um, that's, that'll go into effect for next year, um, that staff is aware of. But we're going to be rolling that out in the spring in preparation for next year because general ed teachers will have to have so much time in terms of trainings. But we're going to first get through park, the district review, the district determined measures and the evaluation process this year, and then move into preparation for the retail, um, for next year. Because we're called Board Three. So any questions on this? I thought it was beneficial for you to see the types of languages, their primary language, um, the frequency based on the D E S E requirements with grade levels they're in. So you're able to see the variations throughout the district. Um, then, of course, the names of the school. And then, most importantly, is their level. Um, so that you're seeing that we, you know, have a variety of students that really are coming in, um, at level four, three, two and one. And one and two require a significant amount of time.
You're, you know, talking with your, um, colleagues. Is this increase, you know, unique to Abington? Or are they experiencing also in the community surrounding us or?
Well, it's interesting. It's, it's not unique to the Commonwealth, but, um, I was sharing with Peter recently is I was taken aback at a meeting that I was at, at North River, where, um, we were writing a grant and so all the E L L teachers were there. And, um, Abington had the largest number of E L L students by far. So from, you know, if you take Rockland, Whitney Hansen, um, Hanover, you know, all, Bridgewater, Rain. I mean, you had a variety. And, um, it was just an, it was eye-opening because then the question is, you know, why are they coming into Abington? And there's access to, you know, to where they work, um, to, you know, different, you know, there's different reasons. Um, but it's interesting because there are surrounding towns, E L L teachers who are nervous that they may have a reduction in their position because they don't have enough students moving into their towns. Whereas Abington is finding the opposite of that.
So we could find a teacher in one aspect.
If they are reduced.
But do, what, by far, what is by far, fifty percent? I mean, did double?
Our numbers are, um... Our numbers are in the 40s, and so...
No, no, I mean, compared to the other communities. Do we have twice as many?
Twice as many students?
You said that by far, we have...
As many ELL students.
Yeah, so we, we, we have about 40 in the whole district, and we have surrounding districts that have less than 10.
However, to add to it, the influx of ELL students is hitting a lot of places. My daughter was hired as a .4 a year ago. Within two months, she was a full teacher. Lot of her students moved on to the high school. And she started this year as a .8. She's now full-time, and they have, they are also looking for a part-time teacher in her school. So, the numbers, although they're transient, they come and go. She's gone up and down. They don't go down very much.
And then, the whole piece with the retail will also be linked to all of that. So, people will be trained, and then they'll be training. We have people from the North River Collaborative that are being trained, and then they're going to be training, right, the teams of staff within the collaborative as well as the surrounding towns. But a lot of it falls down to location. However, we do have a community member who is actually an ELL teacher, part-time at a surrounding district, which I would love for her to possibly join us someday when she's ready for full-time. So, that's nice that, you know, we have that linkages, those ligatures as well.
What's the incremental cost, additional cost, for when a student comes in? Like, we have costs so much to educate a child. But if someone comes in, in the situation, ELL, what's the additional cost to the, for that student? Ballparking big?
We don't really break it down, maybe Felicia can jump in on this too, or Peter, but we don't break it down about student costs based on like, ELL, or special ed, or 504, or Title 1, or general ed. We don't do that, but the cost comes into the staff or the resources that are needed. So that whenever an ELL student comes in, I always look at where the assessment level came out, and I'm going to know that I need to contact the tech department regarding iPad, because that's going to at least give that child the ability to be able to access dictionaries. And then, also, a lot of the service providers are able to access apps. So, we have that. The other piece is, we then get in touch with the actual teacher, and then the principals are all involved in it, because then it's a matter of, if someone moves in, it changes the whole schedule district-wide, because then you have to look at, okay, what levels are they in? And then, you're sometimes, you know, playing in, like, where is this child at? Are they ready to move into the next level? Are we able to give more time to this person? So, you're always looking at the service. So, it really comes down to the cost of the resources and the cost of staff. And we have absolutely gone up on the cost of technology for iPads, particularly this year. We've been able to access it through, you know, same means in former years, but just not the same number of population. This year in particular, it's a much larger number. And what's most difficult is when they come into the high school, and you want them to be able to receive credits, and yet, they are, you know, not learning, they don't know the English language well enough, but they have to learn KEM, and then they have to go into a geometry class, and then they have to move to then an ELA class. It's tough. And so, then we try to access services that we can also give to the high school.
But there's a cost to those services, though, right?
Absolutely. So, the salary of the service for the, it's the ELL, and then it's the iPad. Now, say that there's additional, say that there's something else going on there, and we've done further assessments, and then we determine that there's a need for speech or language, or whatever it may be. You know, that would also be part of it as well.
The staffing changes depending on what level the child's at, correct? Because they have more need and more hours that they're requiring service, or less hours.
So, we have one full-time position. Two people fill it, but one, it's one full-time. We, based on these numbers, I mean, we need another full-time, and we could, based on the moving and the movement within, could actually have two more full-time, based on these numbers today.
Yeah, because we have 14 new students since we weren't planning on...
But one would double, so as a less, right?
And had no idea that we would, no way to anticipate.
Right. And so, Peter knows that for next year, because we're working on the budget for next year, is that the high priority is for ELL, because we're going to need the staffing, that salary, budgeted in, in order to be in compliance.
But it's not just the school part of things, it's the getting them back and forth on the bus, and all that has, they have to be able to understand as well, right?
There's a translation of documents that differs.
All that, all the documents.
Oh, there's definitely a cost with the law in terms of, yeah, you have to do interpretations, you have to do a lot of translations, and all of that goes along.
Provide things like the lunch menu has to be in a language?
If requested, you do. So, if you notice on the bottom of all our letterhead or websites, et cetera, it's if requested. And then, we would actually look, just like the list that you're looking at, some are Portuguese, some are Spanish, some are Vietnamese, some are, you know, what is the need? And then, we have to do the same for if you have a student who's also on an IEP, and you're translating all of those documents, as well as all of those evaluations. We use translation doc, you know, basically, we use those types of, but they're not always the best. So, we sometimes have internal people that speak our foreign language group helps us. And then, sometimes, we also have to look at other translation companies when it gets more detailed. But we, you know, we're not as large as Abrockton, or where they have full departments that handle all of that, but it's definitely one of the changing pieces in Abington in terms of, because a lot of our families are, they, where, where they're living and where they're working, you know, it's a direct line back and forth, and using bus, and different things of that sort. And so, you're seeing that a population that's changing within Abington. And so, we're just making sure, just like any other population, making sure that we're providing them the services by law to meet their needs. So, any other questions on that? Alrighty, and then the next piece is the professional development. You heard a lot of it earlier when the MCAS presentation was given, and Kathy actually brought up the importance of the vertical collaboration. And so, there was a whole PD on vertical collaboration through vertical teaming that has just taken place recently, as well as department meetings. We have a lot going on this year, there's just never enough time to cover it all. So, we're always trying to, you know, use in-service time, use faculty time, use common planning time, use whatever time you can really grab in order to roll out all the initiatives that we have. And so, the second half of the year is going to a continuation of the supervision evaluation, because that's ongoing. But also, we're going to be focusing on the district determined measures that are also part of that. So, that links to your performance ratings, that links to, you know, really breaking down what Kathy was saying in terms of the superintendent being evaluated, it's for everybody else the same way. So, you know, define exemplary, what does that look like? Define proficient, what does that look like? Define needs improvement, and then define, you know, unsatisfactory. And then, everybody has that, so for staff, for administrators, and then being able to provide evidence on all of that. So, that's a big piece, and we have our Joint Labor Committee that's also working through that as well. So, we're jointly coming together, and we will be having administrators working with teams to really pull apart certain pieces of that. And then, another piece is, we have a lot of people that are working fast and furiously to prepare for our district review, as you heard Dr. Roper last month or the month before here, in terms of what's coming. All the documents will be uploaded by February, and then, look at coming in March. And then, we also have three schools that are preparing for the Park pilot on top of the MCAS pilot, so you have that going on. So, there's a lot going on simultaneously, but we're getting through it. So, you'll be hearing about our professional development. But at the same time, if the department heads were here, they would say, can we just talk about curriculum and instruction for a little while? And I think that you've heard that over and over and over again. There are just so many things going on that you don't want to lose sight of. Okay, what are we teaching? Does everybody know what we're supposed to be teaching? And then, you know, how are we teaching it? And then, what assessments are we using to evaluate that? So, we'll keep you posted. And then, I'll come back probably next month, so after it goes through the administrators this morning. We all talked about the professional development and the in-service times for next year, looking at the draft that was submitted this evening. And then, we'll bring it to the Curriculum Planning Council, so that they'll also approve it, or they'll come up with other ideas. And then, we'll talk about it, and then we'll come to all of you for your questions and your approval regarding the professional development for next year.
Just at our November 4th special meeting, in the minutes, it said professional development will decrease unless staff are willing to fund themselves. How does that play into what you just spoke about?
Well, the in-service time, we're providing it internally. But in terms of sending staff out to attend conferences, or courses, or other trainings, or what have you, that will be impacted. We use our grant funding for that, but when you send out a staff member for anything, you have to remember that you're paying for the conference, you're also paying for the substitute, and then, in some cases, paying for the mileage that goes with that. So that you have to take into consideration and the loss of time that the teacher's actually in front of those children. So, we look at that pretty closely, and we try to earmark. And a lot of our staff, they don't like to leave. I mean, they want to be trained, and they want to stay current, but they also, you know, they don't like gaps, you know, in terms of not being in front of the children. So, that's something that...
So, the in-service stuff, that's...
That's not impacting, because that's internal, and that's embedded within our costs. But it's the external pieces, that once we use up all our grant funding, then we also have to move towards the general budget funding.
And just one other, on, in October, we approved the revisions to Bullying Prevention Program. Can you, in, maybe in January, if we get a chance, just what we've done as far as professional development in that area? Because I know, according to the policy, we have some program with Bridgewater State. Just what we've done in that, that area, Bullying Prevention?
Yeah, Peter's taking the lead on this, and it, that's, bullying is ongoing. I mean, that came out, you know, a few years ago, and it's updated, and the legal pieces are updated. But in terms of, Bridgewater State does a great job with, Mark? I don't know the...
Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center.
Great. And so, another acronym for us. But they really do a nice job, you know, in terms of training staff. So, we've had many, all our administrators, and then many of our crisis team members, who have all been trained on that. And so, what we do is, it's really like cyclical, you know, in terms of, okay, who's trained in skillful teaching? Who's trained in data teaming? Who's trained in ELL? Who's trained in bullying? So, you're always going back to the training pieces.
Should publicly thank Mike Corini of the Abington Police Department for offering a program for parents at a combined PTO meeting for all parents in Abington, because it's not limited to our students and our staff and our administrators. It's also our parents, so.
Hey, that's a big piece of it, too, is because bullying can be misunderstood. So, there's the legal definition of bullying, and then, there's the, well, you're just bullying my child. But when that word's brought up now, because it has such legal ramifications, you have to go through the whole process. So, it's, it's the training of our internal staff, but it's really important that parents have that understanding. Because the bullying piece is not only linked to general ed, it's linked to special ed, and being able to explain all of that is important. But we can bring that back. Great, any other questions? Thank you.
I'm going to move on to their report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Usability study update? I'd be happy to give an update. We are, our process is moving along quite nicely. Last week, we had a joint Board of Selectmen and School Committee meeting, and they voted on the recommendation by the School Building Committee to submit our Phase 2 package to the Mass School Building Authority. It's a three-phase process with the School Building Authority, and the vote was to submit, was a unanimous vote by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee to submit Phase 2 to the MSBA, and also to identify a co-located 5 through 12 middle high school with pre-K as the preferred option for the Abington project.
And that would be new construction?
New construction. At the current Abington High School site. In a, in a different area of the, of the high school site. And as we've said for a while, I would absolutely recommend that anyone who's interested to go to the, either the Abington Public Schools website, and you can be, you can click on a link to the School Building Committee website, or you can go to www dot A B S C dot U S.
Yeah. Abington School Building Committee is A S B C dot USA.
A S B C. A S B C dot U S, and all of our presentations are there, all the presentations that have been done by our professional staff of architects and, and designers are up there as well. Our next, we'll be awaiting word from the School Building Authority on feedback regarding our Phase 2 submittal. And we are hoping to be invited to a January board meeting to discuss our project. Any other questions?
If everything went according to plan, what would be the first graduating class in the new school?
2017. 16 will be the last class out of the old building.
Right, but that class of 2017 will have spent one year in that building.
Right, they'd be seniors in that building.
Seniors that come to that building, they graduate that year.
So, the class of 2017 will be the first one in the new building? So, the freshman class now, or the eighth graders?
2017, I are freshmen now. And he would be the last, I think, if we figured this, all the last class out in June.
It's, it's three, it would be three years from, from September. So, yes. So, this year's freshman?
Yeah, this year's freshman. It's like...
Any other questions? FY14 budget update, we've heard for the last half an hour, around some, some drains on our budget for FY14, some unexpected expenditures, we talked about them in November as well. Some staff, some special education staff members that have been required, as well as some ELL support. And it's this time of year that expenses start leveling out, and you feel a little more confident going into the, into the springtime. But we do have these few things that have cost us money, and because of that, we've slowed down professional development, and we're calling it a budget frost right now, and that's, that, we're purchasing things that we, that are needed. And we never purchase things that aren't needed, but we're purchasing things that are especially for curricular reasons or health and safety reasons. And I'll give you an example. I got a call from a department head last week, they had three new students into that school, all enroll in the same class, and they didn't have enough textbooks, so we had to order three textbooks. So, those types of purchases we're doing, where we are continuing to do, and looking very closely at professional development. So, so that's where we are in, for 14, and, and, like I said, things, special ed placements kind of settle out this time of year, and have more, more confidence as we go into...
Any questions? New business establishment, I'm at our next school committee meeting. We have two January meetings, January 2, Tuesday, January 7, 2014, 7:00 P.M. will be a regular meeting with a preliminary FY 2015 budget hearing beginning at 7:30 P.M. that evening. And Tuesday, January 28, 2014, 7:00 P.M., our regular meeting. Do you have other items?
Just quickly, under informational, what I've included is a press release from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Second Education, talking about where, you know, you heard a lot about in the news about how America scored, the United States scored on international tests. Well, again, if you took... Well, again, if you took Massachusetts as its own nation, we score among the highest ranking nations in the world. And it was interesting, Mike Karowski sent me a link to an article that described how even though these results report China as among the highest scoring in the world, they only use the data from wealthy urban areas where they have a high graduation rate. They don't use the data from the entire country. Forty percent of the students in China graduate from high school, whereas they only pick data from places where eighty-some percent...
That happens in most European countries, because the United States educates all children. And so, in most of the world of Europeans, they choose tracks, academic tracks, vocational tracks, and then, so, absolutely right, it's happening there, as well as other communities.
I didn't mean to summarize your article, I just thought it was interesting. And then, I wanted you to know, you know, we talked a little bit about the challenges that Abington has had over the last couple of years, and there are a couple of people in, Chris Nagel and Diane Baxter, that I just need to publicly recognize here, and just thank them. They're stepping down as the president of the sports boosters, Chris Nagel is, and then Diane Baxter is stepping down as the president of the music boosters. And the support that those two organizations have provided us over the years, have provided certain types of emotional and social developmental experiences for kids in Abington that we wouldn't have had without their help. And I guess, the best way to say this is that they are two leaders that understand that the organization is bigger than themselves, and they led those organizations that way. Because it's not just about those two people, but the people in the organizations that they were able to mobilize for fundraising to help. So, I just want to acknowledge particularly those two leadership roles, and those two people, and Chris Nagel and Diane Baxter, and the letters in there to them. And then Roseanne has provided you information about Andrew Force, who will be our representative to Project Three Fifty-One. Kathy and I heard about that at the MAS C conference. And then also, just quickly, not to spend any time on it, but answering, you know, we can, you'll hear about this later, Roseanne Karpaska, the principal of the middle school, has also provided information on research around advisory program. This is not, this advisory program is not going on at the Frollo right now, this is simply research on it. But as you look at this advisory program, you'll see that it's more about study skills, and it aligns with Covey's work on the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, this is the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. And so, it's more about school skills, study skills, successful habits for life. So, I, Roseanne provided that to you, and there'll be more about that in future meetings.